Okay, are we ready, everyone?
Yes.
Okay, all right, well, let's get started. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the City Council meeting of July 15, 2020 at 4:00 P. M., held virtually. At this time, I would like to call to order the July 15 meeting, 2020, held virtually and monitored from the City Council chambers at 520 J Street. Chief, could you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Of course. I pledge allegiance to the five United States of America, to the republic, for which it is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief. All right, let's go to roll call, and Director Maloney, can you call roll, please?
Faria?
Here.
Johnson Santos?
Yes.
Jones?
Present.
Lewis?
Here.
Valalta?
Here, we do have a quorum. Consideration of Approval of Agenda. Staff is requesting that Item 8, Consideration of Adoption of City Council Resolution Number 6240, authorizing the city's support of the Los Vanos Downtown Association in the development of a certified farmer's market and amending the 2021 budget by increasing the community and economic development expenditures in the amount of $900 to be removed from the agenda as the farmer's market will not be able to move forward this year as planned. So the action would be to remove Item 8, Consideration of Adoption of City Council Resolution Number 6240, authorizing the City Council support of the Los Vanos Downtown Association in the development of a certified farmer's market and amending the 2021 budget by increasing the community and economic development expenditures in the amount of $900 to be removed from the agenda. The motion would be to approve the agenda as amended with the removal of Item 8 as stated. Do I have someone who would make that motion?
I'll make it.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, can you make a separate motion to remove the item and then make a separate motion to approve it as amended?
Okay, all right, I'll do it that way. All right, Mr. Faria, would you please, if you would like, put forth a motion to remove the item first?
Will do. I move to remove Item 8, Council Resolution 6240, as read by title, from the agenda.
Okay, do I have a second?
A.
Okay, it's been motioned by Faria, second by Johnson Santos to remove Item 8 from the agenda. All in favor? I'll do a roll call. I'll do a roll call. Faria?
Yes.
Johnson Santos?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Valalta, yes. Okay, now, we need a motion to approve the agenda as amended with the removal of Item 8 as stated. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion, if you'd like.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been motioned by Faria, second by Johnson Santos, to approve the agenda as amended with the removal of Item 8 as stated. And I'll do a roll call. Faria?
Yes.
Johnson Santos?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Valalta, yes. Motion carried. Let's go on to public forum. Members of the public may address the City Council members on any item of public interest that is within the jurisdiction of the City Council, which includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items, and speakers may submit their comments by submitting a written statement, limited to 250 words or less, by dropping it off at the utility box at City Hall at 520 J Street, or by emailing cityclerk@losvanos.org. Comments received will be read into the record during the council meeting. Director Maloney, do we have any council or comments that are, public comments, that are non-COVID-related?
Yes, I have received one email.
Yeah, would you read that, please?
It states, "We can do it. Get an accurate census count in Los Vanos. Communities, cities, and our future depend on getting our share of the $675 billions for our residents. We are investing in our future. Allocations are done by the number of people counted. Only one-third were counted, and two-thirds of our funds went to our states. Yes, other states. 2020 Census Car Caravan. The U.S. Census Bureau invites you to participate in the 2020 Census Car Caravan Weekend. A car caravan is a parade of cars that drives through a strategically selected route. Each car in the caravan displays census messaging to raise awareness of the 2020 census. Please keep social distancing measures in place per the CDC and your city-county guidelines. Our goal is to increase census participation in communities across the country. Now, location, you choose. Select a car caravan route that helps communities with low 2020 census self-response rates for maximum impact. Track the response rates in your community here by visiting a certain indicated website. Suggested caravan participants. You can identify car caravan event organizers and invite car caravan participants from a variety of trusted voices in your community. For example, elected officials. Invite an elected official from a low self-response area to participate in a census car caravan. Nonprofit organizations. Select a nonprofit organization with influence and reach in communities with low response rates. Things to consider. It may be helpful to consider the following as you plan your car caravan event. Identify a primary point of contact to provide communication and logistical support for the event. Map out a clear route, taking into consideration the number of confirmed participant cars, stoplights, etc. Secure relevant city approvals, including from the police department escort or non-escort. Plan a local social media campaign to promote your car canvassing event. Share the fun. Take pictures and videos to share your census car caravan event and hometown pride with your entire community. And that was from Patricia Ramos Anderson. She's with Census LA. And that's all I have.
Thank you. All right, and how many COVID-19-related emails do we have?
I have no COVID-related emails.
Okay, thank you. All right, so if there are no other comments, or is there anyone on the phone who would like to make a comment? Okay, there are no more comments written and no comments I've heard on the phone. I will now close the public forum, and I will go on to Item 6, Consideration or Approval of Consent Agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will vote it on in one motion unless removed from the council consent agenda by a city council member. And tonight, we have Director Maloney?
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrant numbers 222771 through 222972 in the amount of $1,102,831.47. Minutes for the June 17, 2020, City Council meeting. Minutes for the July 1, 2020, City Council meeting. City Council Resolution Number 6236, Approving Density Bonus Housing Agreement between the City of Los Vanos and Sunset Hills Development LLC. City Council Resolution Number 6237, Accepting Parcel Map 2020-01 along with the dedications of 10 feet public utility easements located south of Parcel A and Parcel B along East Pacheco Boulevard, State Highway 152, as shown in said parcel map. 1420 East Pacheco Boulevard, APN 428140030. City Council Resolution Number 6238, Approving and Adopting Final Track Map Number 2017-01, Stone Creek at Los Vanos, The Villages 7, Phase 1B Unit 2, and Accompanying Subdivision Improvement Agreement, Anderson Homes. Any items are to be approved as submitted.
Okay, thank you. And are there, is there any city council member who would like to remove an item for discussion? I will go through the roll. Faria?
No.
Johnson Santos?
No.
Jones?
No.
Lewis?
I have no comment, Mr. Mayor. However, there are several people who have their microphones still on, and I hear a lot of background noise. If they can mute them, other than who needs to have their mic on.
Okay, thank you. And Valalta, I have no comments. So I do not wish to remove any item. So with that, do I have a motion for the consideration of the approval of the consent agenda? Would someone make the motion?
I'll make the motion, Mayor.
Okay, I have, I have a second. Okay, it's been motioned by Johnson Santos, second by Faria, for the approval of the consent agenda. All in favor? And I will call roll. Faria?
Yes.
Johnson Santos?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Valalta, yes, motion carries. Okay? Let's go on to Item 7, Public Hearing. If you challenge proposed action described herein in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described herein or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing, public hearing. To receive public comment and consideration of repealing the local amendments Section 8-1.18A and Section 8-1.18B of the Los Vanos Municipal Code related to water heater prohibited locations and water heater protection from damage. Ordinance Number 1186, repealing previously enacted local amendments to the California Plumbing Code as it pertains to water heaters. Okay? And who are we going to?
Read description. Read me, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. This, this item may look a little familiar to you. The last council meeting, I presented this all as well, unfortunately, and the book that was, that was never published. So I bring it back to you to do the first reading, and then we'll move forward at the next meeting for the adoption, if we so move. This ordinance is about amending and removing amendments number 504.13 and Amendment 507.131 of the Plumbing Code, basically, which are sections 8-1.18 of the Los Vanos Municipal Code. Why are we doing this? Just review real quick is, City of Los Vanos and building apartment are dedicated to the safety and well-being of all of our residents in the city. Currently, there's a City Code Amendment requiring residential water heaters to be placed in an exterior enclosed closet and not placed inside attached garages. This was amended many years ago due to the fact that the gas-fired water heaters were probably one of the most dangerous appliances in a home. So the, because of these multiple safety issues and hazards, it was, it was decided that they should be removed out of the garages and into an exterior closet. With the recent advances and revisions of the current plumbing code and that the water heaters now are being manufactured with multiple safety factors, as well as the popularity of the newer safer tankless water heaters, staff feels that it's time to revisit this code amendment and eliminate the requirements to place these water heaters in an exterior closet. Staff feels that the current plumbing code addresses all the safety concerns and installation requirements, so providing any additional receiver amendment would not be necessary. Water heater manufacturers, just a little bit of information on water heater and manufacturing. A lot of the changes that were done was, they provided a better pathway of combustion air into the burner compartment to improve the combustion safely. A flame arrestor plate has been, has been added during manufacturing, which helps prevent burn rollout. Flame rollout safety devices are now required, which will automatically shut off the water heater if the flame escapes certain boundaries. Along with these safety improvements, it has, it's been a creation of a sealed burned compartment within the water heater. So Section 504.1 of the California Plumbing Code was amended, like I said earlier, basically prohibiting locations of where they were installed. And our amendment said that the water heaters are not to be installed in sleeping bedrooms made for sleeping, garages, bathrooms, closets, or any other closet or confined space opening in any bed or bathroom. Section 507 was, code was amended that basically stands, "The water heater generated a glow, a spark, or flame capable of igniting flammable vapors may be installed in residential garages constructed on before August 4th of 1973, provided that the pilots and burners and heating elements and switches are at least 18 inches above the floor." Where these, where such water heaters are installed, within the garages are enclosed in a separate approved compartment having access from, from the outside, or only from the outside, the garage and the water heater may be installed at the floor. So if it wasn't, if it was not prior to 1973, if it was, at that point, it was needed to be 18 inches above the floor. And that all water heaters installed in an area where they may be subjected to mechanical damage such as, shall be suitable or guarded against damage being installed, be not adequate barriers, or by being elevated, located out of the normal path of vehicles using such a garage. So 2019 California Plumbing Code addresses these issues. It, it, it addresses the fact that appliances in residential garages and in adjacent spaces that open to the garage and are not part of the living space of the dwelling shall be installed so that the burners and burner ignition devices are located not less than 18 inches above the floor unless it's, unless listed as a flammable vapor ignition resistant. The physical damage issue, appliances installed in garages, warehouses, or other areas subject to mechanical damage shall be guarded against such damage by installed by, shall be installed behind protective barriers or being elevated out of the way. One of the things that they're doing now with the tankless water heaters is, is they are elevated out of the way and vehicles cannot have access to them for damage. And access from the outside where appliances are installed in a separate enclosed space having access only from the outside of the garage, such appliances shall be permitted to be installed at the floor level providing the required combustion air is taken from the exterior of the garage. So in conclusion, the amendments that the city required many years ago provided an extra layer of safety for residents within the city, but due to the advances in product design and the current plumbing code requirements, these amendments are no longer needed. As mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, this process allows us to clean up our codes a bit, enforce the current standards, and maintain safety as the priority. So therefore, staff recommends City Council open the public hearing, receive public feedback, then waive the first reading and introduction of the amendment and removal of ordinance and ordinances of the City of Los Vanos, Amendment Number 504, Water Heater Prohibited Locations, and Amendment 507, Water Heater Protection From Damage of the California Plumbing Code 2019 Edition, set forth in Section 8-1.18 of the Los Vanos Municipal Code. So I know this all sounds familiar, and I appreciate your time. If anyone has a question, I'm more than happy to answer that. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, before I open up the public hearing, are there any comments or questions from city council members? Okay, not seen or hearing anyone. I will now open the public hearing on Ordinance Number 1186, repealing previously enacted local amendments to the California Plumbing Code as it pertains to water heaters. Director Maloney, do we have any comments?
Let me check real quick. I have no comments.
Thank you. Is there anyone on the phone that would like to make a comment? Okay, if there are no comments in the public hearing and no one on the phone, I will now close the public hearing related to Ordinance Number 1186, bring it back to council level. And I need a motion to waive the first reading and a motion for the introduction. Who would like to do that?
Mr. Mayor, this is Council Member Lewis, I'll take that one.
Okay, go ahead.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the first reading of Ordinance Number 1186 as read by title.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Mayor, I'll second that.
Okay, sorry, okay, so it's been seconded by Faria. Okay, I have a motion by Lewis for the waiving of the first reading and a second by Faria. All in favor? A roll call. Faria?
Yes.
Santos? Johnson Santos?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Valalta, yes. Okay, Mrs. Lewis, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to introduce Ordinance Number 1186 as read by title.
Mr. Faria?
Second.
Okay, it's been motioned by Lewis, second by Faria for the introduction of Ordinance Number 1186. Faria?
Yes.
Johnson Santos?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Valalta, yes. Okay, motion carries. All right, let's go on to Item B, Public Hearing. To receive public comment and consideration, the proposal of the City of Los Vanos consider a categorical exemption from the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, pursuant to Section 15302D, and establish an underground utility district along 8th Street from between 5th and 6th Streets to 2nd Street in the City of Los Vanos. And we're going to Public Works Director Faison.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. This is mainly a cleanup operation where we want, we would like you to conduct a public hearing and then after you consider any comments, adopt the resolution establishing utility undergrounding District 7C. And this all stems from, as PG collects our monthly bills, one of those other items is a amount they collect, a very minor amount, to underground power poles, overhead electric facilities throughout the state of California, wherever they service people. And what happened is, we actually are, we do not have an active project. As of June 2018, this was a project, 7C, it was the exact same project. This one's a little smaller, just a little bit smaller. It goes from about the Henry Miller Plaza west to 2nd Street. But we did have a project, PG designed it, did some work on it for us, and it ended up being more money than we had in credits. Credit, basically, a credit is equivalent to a dollar, basically. And what you do is you accumulate the credits, and then you get, and you can have a project to use that money to underground. PG will design it, and they go out the contract with it. You're allowed to borrow five years ahead of your credits, or you can also borrow from other cities if you want. But we definitely, we did not have the money to proceed, so we actually sent them a letter that said that we withdrew this district from the undergrounding program. Well, we recently got a letter that said that we do not have any active projects as of, I think it's August 11th, I think that's the date. And what happens then is they take the enacted projects and they take the new allocation of that year and allocate it to active projects, cities that need it. Basically, basically, that means you will lose your allocation if you don't have an active project. All an active project means is that we have a resolution that the city council approved for our utility district. It's supposed to be good for five years. They're usually good a lot longer because PG takes a long time to design these. So although you're seeing us doing it now, you will not see this design for many, many years, probably five, six years. But we need to reserve the funds. I'll give you the, if you look at the. On my attachments, we currently have a balance of one point three million in work credits. And this year's allocation is about eighty six thousand work credits, about eighty six thousand equivalent to dollars. So if we didn't have an active project by August eleventh, as I stated, those eighty six thousand dollars credits would go into a pool. And there is a project, I believe it's in the city of Live Oak that is wanting to use the unused credits. And if you don't, in that case, they can take those credits. As long as we have an active project, which just means at this point a resolution, those credits will keep building up. And the way these credits are distributed, it's really a very complicated formula. Fifty percent of it is based on a ratio of overhead meters in your city to overhead meters in the entire PGNE system. And fifty percent of it is based on total meters in your city, electric meters versus total meters in the just in. In all the cities involved PGNE. So it's very complicated. So that's how they get the eighty five thousand seven hundred a year credit. Exists now. That's about as much information as I know about that. So at this point, we're asking you to approve the resolution establishing seven C. Like I said, it is exactly the same. It's a little smaller, but it's the same district along H Street. That we had in the past and still the one we want, we would like PG to do in the future. And this will give us at least five more years of yearly credits plus five years on top of that to. To back loan forward our credits. So it will give us possibly a pretty decent job in about five, six years. If I remember rightly, I think the project was in the area when it penciled out was over two billion dollars. So you can see we only have one point three even with the credit we did. We weren't there. If you take five years of it, you still, we still weren't there. So maybe going forward, we will have that. Now Pete, now these credits pay for everything. Except for the actual streetlights that you're putting because the streetlights come off the power poles and they go underground. And the cities have to pay for those streetlights, the actual material for them. You're also given part of this fifty nine dollars per services in this work credit. If it goes above that, the city's responsible. That would take a very complicated service to go above that. So that's where I'm at at this point. So if we could open up the public hearing, get comments, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Faison. Alright, any, at this time, council members, you have any comments before I open up the public hearing? Okay, thank you. Alright, so at this time, I would like to open up the public hearing. Director Maloney, do we have any comments?
Let me refresh my email.
Okay.
I have no comments.
Thank you. Anyone on the phone? Are there any comments? Okay, not hearing any. I will bring it back to council level and City Council Resolution number six two three nine. Establishing underground utility District seven dash C in the city of Los Manos. Any comments by council members? Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, go ahead.
I move to adopt City Council Resolution number six two three nine as read by title.
Okay, do I have a second?
Mister Mayor, Councilmember Lewis, I'll second the motion.
It's been motioned by Faria and seconded by Lewis for the adoption of City Council Resolution number six two three nine as read by title. Mister Faria?
Yes.
Johnson Santos?
Yes.
Jones? Mister Jones?
Sorry, yes.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Lewis?
Yes.
And Valalta, yes, motion carries. Okay, item eight has been removed from the agenda. I'm gonna go to item nine. Consideration of adoption of City Council Resolution number six two four one approving SR one fifty two interim and midterm safety enhancing. Congestion relief improvements as developed by the SR one fifty two Safety Task Force Work Group. And I'm gladly going to Mister Faison for this.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Tonight, today, this afternoon, I'll present what the SR one fifty two Safety Task Force Work Group. Has developed as far as interim and midterm safety enhancing and congestion relieving improvements. These really are trying to pick the low fruit off the tree, the easiest ones that we could do now to try to help this situation. Just to give you a little background, since December of two thousand nineteen, members of many agencies have been meeting. On a pretty much a monthly basis to go over these improvements and go over the state Route one fifty two corridor. And these people, these, this group includes the state of California. Caltrans, including their director of District ten, city of Los Manos, staff and elected officials. Alex has been there and the mayor has represented the city as Brett has been there also. We also have Merced County Association of Governments has represented themselves, County of Merced. The California Highway Patrol, Los Manos Unified School District has been there. The fire, our local fire department and our local police department representatives have been there, the chiefs have attended these meetings. And other local entities and concerned citizens. It's been a very, quite a bit of the, quite a bit of the staff. Now, on the side note of this, there has been, there was a separate technical group that consisted of, I would say. Twelve Caltrans engineers and me to go over some of these improvements up in Stockton. So we did have a technical staff work group that was working on this at the same time. Now, this ties in very roughly, but we have had a study in the past. In June two twenty fifteen of the state Route one fifty two comprehensive operational study. That we did present to the council back then. And it basically got approved with many, many deletions. And I have put some of those deletions on here and their old staff reports included. The major one deletions were, there was no mediums that were approved, no raised mediums that were approved because they were pretty extensive throughout the entire route. No intersection improvements were were approved widening or anything like that. And no closure of any streets. There was a few others also and a few things were approved also. One of the things was upgrading the signals and all those controllers have been upgraded to the current modern devices so that that has been done. Another item was as you come from Badger Flat and you head east. There's three lanes there and one was kind of a lost lane. It's been put to a drop, drop lane where right only as you hit Artigalita. That is, that that has been processed. There was also some improvements to, trying to think of what they call that, but it's electronic measures, it's signage. There's only one of those that are being done and they're being done, they're scheduled to be done in the summer of twenty twenty one and that's a camera system. At Mercy Springs and State Route one fifty two signal location. The other, it's called ITTS systems. The other ITTS systems have not been approved and they will be in the future as projects develop. That would encompass them in there. And those are like directional signs, signs that say how far to go here. Do we have an accident ahead at twenty miles? Those are the kind of directional signs that they were recommending at that time. And they weren't necessarily within our city limits. They were on the east and west side of our city. But they would have definitely helped and they still are in the planning stages. Let me go over some of the, let me go over a few of the things and we'll go intersection by intersection. Next slide, please. This is the Badger Flat Road intersection of State Route one fifty two. Besides timing and and issues that they are dealing with separately. They have the one recommendation, if you can see the red, is to make that a extending the raised median island two hundred fifty to three hundred feet. That exit point that you see heading north there is the exit from the Walmart Shopping Center. And it is already a right in, right out exclusion. It's already done this way. So this. Median only emphasizes what's already in place. It's not more restrictive. It does restrict a couple of driveways on the north side, but they do have access around it. And this is an area that has a lot of conflicts. One thing that we did during this technical study, we actually got a chart. That showed every intersection along this route and the accident frequency on those intersections. So we tried to address that as much, much as possible. So that's that that one. And when we say raised median, raised medians. We're looking at trying to get concrete medians, but they're also looking at those, and I forget the term of them now, those paddles that exist on the road that are very. Robust paddles and using those in certain areas, especially the last one that I show you. I think that's the last thing.
Channelizers.
What do they call it?
Channelizers, I think was the name of it.
Thank you. Channelizers, yes, are not the most beautiful thing, but that's what they're looking at. So that's that intersection. If we can go to the next, next slide, I would appreciate it. And I'm going one, I got this stuff written down here, so I'm going one on one. At State Route one fifty two and I Street, we do have some signal ahead signage that they are. Or wanting to put on, put on the bridge and on the ground on West as you go north and south on I Street, that hasn't been done yet. The second item of add two supplemental signs for existing mast arms. Has left turn yield on the the green, on the green, it says ball, but it's a green signal. And that, those two have been installed. The third item down there is the remove of the existing sign on West Side and replace with a left through and right turn designated line, lane assignment panel. And I just saw it today, so that has been, that has been put in. So some of these things have been already approved, approved and put in. And some are being done. Midterm solutions is to remove a crosswalk on the west leg. And also change the configuration of the northbound leg of the I Street. To have a dedicated left turn lane, just left turn and a shared through and right lane. We believe there's a lot less movements on the right lane movement and the through and the shared lane should be the through and the right, the right lane. That will involve upgrading the signal head, some timing and checking the turning radius. So even though it's a midterm solution, it will take a little while. Long term solution here is they are looking at installing a different signal here, adjusting this intersection. Adding another axel decel lane on the north. It'd be the northwest side and actually have it so trucks can navigate that turn from I Street. Heading west on Pacheco, that's the biggest conflict that we have. And actually squeezing in three lanes heading north on I Street without none of them being shared. That's the long term proposal that they're looking at. That will, that will include a total design and total encroachment permit. So that's on the I Street. If we can go to the next one, I'd appreciate it unless there's a question. Okay, on Fourth Street, this is a little different. And this is, the first one is considering moving Fourth Street parking up to two, up to two hundred feet from the intersection. Now I changed all this wording with Caltrans knowing to say up to. Because on these, on the local streets, there's no need to go two hundred feet, but up to is just something that we will determine as we look in the field. And most of them are marked already. They're just, they just need new signage or they need a little extension of the signage. The ones that are brand new, the actual distance, we will be before traffic safety committee. Traffic Safety Committee did look at this presentation and did approve it in a concept to forward it on to City Council. So actual, when we start eliminating parking, that isn't, that isn't just a clarification, it will go before the. Traffic Safety Committee because that's one of their duties. But on this particular one, on Fourth Street. On the, on the east, on the north side, on the east side, we would need about forty feet to the first driveway. To to paint red or to restrict parking, whichever we do with the signage. And that's right in front of that restaurant. And what happens is people don't do it because people are, most people don't do it. If you park right there after the return, you are liable to really delay traffic and and with people making that turn off the highway, it makes it very congested. The whole object is to get people off the highway quickly. And if there's, if you can eliminate a little bit of parking, it allows a smoother movement. But right there, we're only saying the first, the first thruway to the first driveway. It's not that far, no one uses it. Now, on the, most of the time, on the west side, that's already restricted park, parking for that way. So there's nothing to be done on that one. Now, if you go on the south side of Fourth Street, on the south side of the intersection. Both of these are already striped all the way to Washington, either striped or signage or signed all the way to Washington for no parking. There'd be nothing that we would do on that but refresh it. So that would require nothing else. The other thing is, is along, along the freeway, along say Route one fifty two. Driveways located within a hundred and fifty feet from the intersection. They should be converted to right in, right out with raised median. The reason why is the driveways that are within one hundred and fifty feet of the intersection. Actually would allow people exiting those driveways to actually exit across a dedicated turn lane, dedicated left turn lane. This is not a very safe, safe issue. Now, I'll give you an example. We're talking about a hundred and fifty, fifty feet on each side versus the first study that I, that I quoted earlier. Had us doing all the way from fourth to sixth, solid median. So this is a little different, but it does affect, it does affect driveways on say Route one fifty two. On the west side of the intersection, it's already handled. They're, they're already restricted. I think there's actually a median already there. So the restrictions exist. There's nothing to do there. On the east side, both of the fast food restaurants, one is a regular, regular driveway. The other was, is their drive through driveway. Would have to be right in, right out. And then across the street between the, between the taqueria and the laundromat, that would have to be a right in, right out. Because you would have, we would, we would, Caltrans would be putting a raised median along, along that one hundred fifty feet from the intersection to protect that left turn move. So it is some restriction, but it's nowhere near the restrictions that were in the first place.
Now, if we can go to the next slide.
Mister Mayor, I have a question on this particular slide.
Yes, go ahead, Mrs. Lewis.
Thank you. Mister Faison, on the first part of this item that you were talking about heading. West on one fifty two and making that right turn on Fourth Street going north. I guess that was a little bit unclear as to how far the, the red striping is supposed to go because. On the southern portion, you said it's striped all the way to Washington. But I believe it's, if I'm correct, it's L Street that comes on the backside of the post office. Coming out there onto Fourth Street. Sometimes there are cars parked there and there's no visibility whatsoever to be able to see from. Trying to make a left turn on the Fourth Street to head south. So I was just wondering, is that, is that street going to be completely up to L Street?
No, no. That would not be part of this project. That's a local street and if that needs to be looked at, we look at it as local. This is nothing to do with the state Route one fifty two. Safety. It's a safety issue now that you bring it up, but no, we would only paint the red curb from the return. In front of the taqueria down to their driveway. That is, because beyond that, there's. Dedicated on-street parking for several businesses and we're trying to reserve the parking. It's very valuable. And not impact, impact the businesses as little as possible and allow safety movements off of the highway.
So then either a council or a community member would need to bring something to the safety committee to consider. Striping Fourth Street up to L. So you can have.
Yeah, since I think almost all your members are here, we will put that on the agenda. I'm sure the chief can put that on the next agenda to look at.
I, I'd appreciate that because it is a hazard. Fourth Street as, as it kind of curves around there by the Salvation Army and. When you have those two traffics interceding and people are parked there on the north side of Fourth Street. The, the north side of Fourth Street, it makes it difficult and you, you end up pulling out too far in the traffic. To try to see what's beyond those cars in order to make a proper left turn. So I, I would appreciate it if, if that could go on the agenda for the safety committee.
We will, we will study it. It is an area that is very, very highly parked. It's, there's not. Parking spots for either the businesses or the residents in the area, but we definitely will study it. Okay. Any more comments on this particular slide? Oh, there you go. Thank you, Sonia. On Sixth Street, we'll go over this also. We, it, Sixth Street, it says extend westbound left turn lane on State Route one fifty two. So if you've ever been there, that, that. Turn lane needs to be expanded. There's no question about it. I'm gonna skip over the parking, come back to it. Driveways along one fifty two, hundred fifty feet from the intersection should be converted. You see the same requirements almost on every intersection that we study here. Now, when I look at that. Now, when I look at that, um, there, on the driveways on one fifty-two, on the west side of the intersection from Sixth Street, uh, all those driveways to have right in, right out only sign, I mean, right, right out only signs. One is missing the sign, but it's, uh, obviously it's just missing because the ones more west have those signs. So that's a matter of just having signage installed there and it probably has been lost in tran- in transition. On the east side of the intersection, uh, we will have, in front of the seven eleven, there will be one, one driveway there that will be, uh, a right in, right out. And across the street from that, uh, is where the tow truck, tow trucks park, use that lot. There's two driveways there and both of those would be right in, right out. Now, the impact to them, they still have a driveway on Sixth Street that leads them right to a signal. So I don't think the impact's as great as, as it would appear to be. Um, as far as parking restrictions, and it's the same parking up to two hundred feet. If you look at that, um, all the parking in front of the auto parts stores already, already restricted because it's a right only, it's a right turn lane, it's not an issue. Uh, across the street from it, where the tow truck is, tow truck yard is, we are looking at striping that down to the first diagonal parking and you can see that in that diagram. So actually it goes across the driveway. You don't stripe the driveway because it's already no parking. So we would have that much clear, clear for people to clear the, uh, to clear the highway. And I don't think I've ever seen someone parking that first little bit before the driveway. It's a very dangerous place to park. On the other side of the street, um, uh, let's see, we, um, my record, records here, here. On the south side, the east side and the west side, they both are striped for a hundred and twenty feet. So we, and when you look at it, we believe that it says up to two hundred feet. We think the hundred and twenty feet is plenty of distance to get the, to get the cars off the road without impacting the businesses and impacting, uh, the businesses that exist there, uh, along, along that area. And I think that's some, uh, if that's a seven eleven, I think it is. It would also be the dentist office that are down that street. So in order, and they do use their parking and there's plenty of room to get, to, to reach that and then have parking started. It's, we think that's a hundred and twenty feet is enough on that and it's already striped. So, um, the one area, uh, yeah, it's already striped. It's just a matter of whether we have to refresh it or put new signage up. So it's no more restrictions than exists now. Is there any questions on any, uh, on this particular intersection?
Council members, are there any?
I know it's a lot.
Uh, none from me.
Okay, Mrs. Santos?
Not currently.
Okay, Mr. Jones?
None.
Okay, Mr. Lewis, Mrs. Lewis?
No questions.
Okay, thank you. And I'm on the committee, so I've seen this, these slides many times. Go ahead, Mr. Fajian.
You're the one I was worried about, Mayor. I'm just absolutely kidding you. No, I think, yeah, it's been a good effort by the committee. Let's go, if we go to Seventh Street, here we are right now. Uh, the first thing that happens is, is, and you'll see a picture of it, um, the first driveway heading east on the highway, uh, that leads to the Pacheco Park is real, for safety reasons, it's too close, it's really too close to that intersection. Uh, so the, the, it, first it said close off, we don't want to do that, we want to relocate it, which still allows some parking behind it if somebody wanted to back up. But we still, uh, the committee felt that it needed to be, uh, moved away from the left turn lanes and you can see how close it is to allow a safer movement there. Um, so that was that one. Uh, let's see what else we have on that. Uh, and then the parking issues are very interesting. Uh, along the library frontage along Seventh Street, actually in front of the library, it's all restricted parking. It's all, it's all marked, painted red. From the last driveway of the library, where the library is, to the intersection, there's no designation. And that's actually where people use it as a right turn lane. And, um, that, that has no parking capability at all. So we will be finishing the striping or the no parking all the way to the intersection there. So that will allow, uh, it allows people to also have a kind of a right turn movement and, uh, it's, it's more clear. Now, across the street from that is the auto, the, the auto parts place. That actually, um, doesn't have any restrictions now along Seventh Street. And I don't know why, I don't know if it was a condition that was never followed through, but it would need, there's a, I don't know, about thirty or forty feet along Seventh Street that I've never seen anyone park there and I haven't been there all the time. And they have plenty of parking on site, so that restriction I don't think is at, at all cumbersome to the, to the auto shop, auto, uh, parts dealership, probably safer for their driveway in and out, actually. And that would bring you right to the first residence, so we believe that, that would fulfill that requirement. Now, little different situation on the north side. Um, let's go to, on the, on the north side of, uh, the intersection on Seventh. If you go to the west side, that is an area that's heavily parked by, uh, school employees. And it is currently striped because there's a, there is a fire hydrant there, it's striped about fifteen feet. We see that area probably needing about twenty, twenty-five more feet of striping, not all the way two hundred feet because that's a really needed area for parking. Uh, but that would give enough room for two cars to get into that right turn lane and help traffic move. Now, on the opposite side of the street, there is an issue there. It currently is a loading zone and, uh, I actually believe and talked to Caltrans about it and they do too. It's better to leave that as a loading zone than to make that a no parking zone because if you make it a no parking zone, those cars are going to be in the travel lane and you'll really have a backup to the highway. So we, uh, around the, the turn, the return, we'd like to have thirty feet, just enough room for the cars to clear of red parking, but to leave the no park, to leave the loading zone parking there. And it's, uh, so, uh, the parent drop-off works a little bit. Uh, like I said, if we got rid of that, that parent drop-off would be in the slow, in, in the lane and you would have massive backup coming across during school hours. So that's our recommendation on this intersection. Any comments on this one?
I have a question, May.
Go ahead.
Um, so I, I have a question about, uh, the Pacheco Park, please, uh, Mark. Um, the, for the possibility in future, possibly staying some grants, will this be something that we'll need to look at again due to possibly something happening, uh, like some updating of the park in the future?
Ye- yes, that whole parking layout in the front's going to be looked at again. It may be a diagonal parking, but it will be, the first driveway will be at least two hundred feet. No, we, we can't do this, so it fits into the plan unfortunately. It's going to have to be something that probably will have to be demolished when and if we get that park grant. The, there's no, kind of no way around that. Um, uh, but, but just for now, and you know, the park grant, if it happens, great. And we're, we're, actually, it's due again in December, just to let you know about that. But, uh, if it happens, great. If not, and we're still seeking the funds, we will be, this, we will seek to move this driveway. This is one I had trouble with myself, but, um, I, I can see the reason. Uh, there is a reason for it, so.
Okay, thank you very much, Mark.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Welcome.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Fajian.
Okay, thank you. Uh, on State Route one fifty-two, Mercy Springs, also known as State Route one sixty-five intersection. The only, the only thing the committee recommended at this time was to refresh the interse- intersection striping. Specifically, the two left turn movements needs to be actually striped out so people follow that because they're crossing those lines a lot. That was the only thing at the moment they were looking at. They have looked at the timing, they think the timing's very good. There is a caveat at the end of this, uh, why they didn't do, why we didn't look at more improvements and I'll let you know at the end. We do have a, a big job coming in here that will help. But that's all we had at this one was to refresh the striping of this intersection to make it more evident to stay in your lane. Um, it's no questions. Okay, on Ward. This is the one with the, with the heaviest, uh, hard-handed median, median issue, or as we said, the paddles or whatever they're called, the, and that's, this is where they'll probably be. If you look at this, the red line is where the recommendation is, is to put in the raised median, which will be the, probably the, uh, dividers or whatever they are, the, the ones that stand up about three or four feet instead of the median, because this is about thousand feet, which is quite expensive. Now, what's happening here now, and I want to stress this, this isn't restricting any movements that aren't already restricted. This is reinforcing movements that are supposed to be followed. When the, when, uh, when the Commercial Ventures on the north side went in, they put in two diverters here and they were supposed to be right in, right out and that, that was a requirement. So that's something that that's Commercial Venture had to do at that time. Uh, we'd have a lot of problems with people going into the, into the Jim or into the Chevron into, in that turn lane and just stopping as people are going to stack all the way down to Ward. It, it's a very dangerous situation. We also have individuals who leave Sun, uh, uh, that one street, which I think is Rancho Drive, and make a total illegal U-turn in the middle of the street. And that's also restricted too as a right out only and right in only. So these are just enforcing existing restrictions. Um, and, and we think that that's important to enforce it. We have a U-turn capability at Ward Road now. Uh, it's, it's, everything's available. They make the U-turn, they go into this, they can go into these, uh, driveways. They can take a, a left on Ward and they're right into the subdivision also. And, uh, they still can go right in and right out on these intersections. So this is what, uh, the, uh, the committee decided would be a good thing to do. Any questions on this? Now, base, yes. Now, basically, these slides that you have seen are what we're asking in the resolution to approve in concept. And as, we're going to do these, and as you can see, I don't think a single one of them is two hundred feet restricted parking. So we're going to look at these and do just very reasonable, accurate solutions. Most of them are already existing, uh, parking that we're just going to reinforce. The ones that impact people's parking that they're currently using will go before the Traffic Safety Committee, which is one of their functions, and I think it's like three locations of like forty feet, it's not much. So we will be bringing that, uh, specifically back to the committee where it's not just a refresher or just adding a sign that may be missing. So that's, that's what you'll be seeing in the resolution. I do have a couple of items I'd like to talk about just as a, that really tie into State Route one fifty-two safety features. Um, the biggest, the biggest thing that came out in the committee and it's come out every time we've studied this intersection is traffic synchronization. That has come up every single time, that the only way to, to make this safe is to synchronize all these signals as well as possible, then look at how safe it's going to be. Synchronize it and we actually had an eight hundred thousand dollar CMAC grant, I'd think five or six years ago, that we actually dropped. We didn't use it because of side traffic concerns, side street concerns. Currently, with CMAC, we actually have been approved by the CMAC Committee and that's MCAG CMAC Committee that were, that looks at this for a total project of nine hundred thousand dollars, a hundred thousand in federal fiscal year twenty twenty-one to get the engineering started, approved. And then for federal fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, eight hundred thousand dollars to put in all the interconnect and the synchronization. This will be wireless, this will have cameras, uh, uh, at each intersection and it will be all the intercept, it will be all the improvements. This also will have the capability, this will, will, Caltrans will own this. They will own it, they will control it, they will have our input on this. This also has the capability, it's, it's all by, you know, it's all, it's all modern, has the capability to give you how we synchronize signals during the busy times and how we synchronize off-hours. Do we, you know, do we impact the local streets less during the off-hours? So this is probably will be a computer, uh, it will be a sta- station that probably sits at their maintenance yard and they will be programming it from there. So we do have this, uh, if, if, um, MCAG's governing board approves this, we were the highest rated job for CMAC, then we will start proceeding in September with getting, uh, all the form, it's called RFIs. The, getting this money takes a lot of time. So we'll do the RFIs and, uh, get all this proposed, proposal to be approved. We estimate that will take almost two next September. Now, remember that the federal fiscal year is October first to September, to the end of September, so it's different than our fiscal year. So, uh, I didn't, we didn't want to put the construction in fiscal year, federal fiscal year twenty twenty-one because if you don't meet that goal, you can't move it, you can't move it forward, you can't move it backwards, you can't move it the year coming up. But if for some reason we happen to get this really, where we get this approved in, let's say, July for some reason, we could ask to move the eight hundred thousand dollars up a year. You can't ask to move back, but you can ask to move up. So I wanted to take the most conservative approach, this is almost a million dollars to our corridor and I think it's a very valuable item. Uh, Caltrans is, I, I know they own this corridor, they're not allowed to compete for CMAC at all, uh, the jurisdiction has to. They did a lot of help on this. And the one thing about this grant, this grant, once you get the RFI approved, you, you have some money to get that done. But once you get that approved, you owe eleven point five percent matching to this grant. We will not be matching if, if the governing board approves it. We're taking something that's called toll credits and it's a credit that belongs to the whole, uh, MCAG area. And it, it, the application asked for and the committee did approve that the toll credits would pay our eleven point four seven percent match of nine hundred thousand. So you can imagine that's, you know, that's a hundred thousand right there that we will not be, uh, putting into the pool. We will put our time, we'll put some of the beginning engineering just to get to the point where we actually are approved through CMAC. And then from then on, we have total reimbursement, uh, on this project. Um, that's really, really a kind of exciting project. Any questions on this particular one before I go to the next? Okay, um, the next one is actually the State Route one fifty-two and Eleventh Street project, the one that has the pedestrian signal. I did include in your packet, uh, the, some design sheets that shows the signal that's being proposed. It is a four-leg signal, a one private leg will be in the Chevron. Uh, this was a, really a hard one to debate with Caltrans on because they don't like doing that. But if we didn't have a leg with a signal at Chevron, basically that service station had no way for eastbound traffic to get to them without making some very odd movements. You know, the next intersection up is just really hard to deal with. So it looks like, and I just got this a while back, that their current, their current, what they are, they are designing a four-way signal to replace that pedestrian signal. I, they do expect this to break ground in summer of twenty twenty-one. So I know it's late, but this is what we're expecting them to do. And, um, we do have, and it will be, uh, four-legged intersection, which will be incorporated into the synchronization project. Any questions on any of this? I know it's a lot, sorry.
Go ahead, Mark.
Oh, that's all I have. Uh, now if we could, um, I guess it'd be public, if you know, I guess public hearing, did we ask for that? We did.
Uh, we did. No.
Okay, that's fine, yeah.
Okay.
And you know, when, when you look at this, if you go back to the previous study, um, we had quite a few businesses that came forward. I thought it was like, I think we batted a hundred percent on it. I think it was the best batting average we ever had. Uh, businesses that came forward and didn't want any of the median, that, which, which made sense. And if you looked at, well, it made sense for them. You know, if you looked at this situation, uh, versus the old study, this is only areas that are for the turning movements, the actual dedicated left turns and enforcing existing, uh, uh, left turn restrictions. We're not going beyond and going between fourth and sixth and all the way like they were doing before or recommending before. Uh, and that's why we believe it's a lot better, palatable solution for the businesses. Because it's, it's only affecting, I believe, four of them, which is important, I understand. But, uh, I think that, uh, crossing over dedicated left turn lanes is, is a very dangerous proposition. So that's kind of where we're at with this. Thank you.
Thank you. The, uh, the committee, uh, uh, thanks to Dan Mathelhany, the director of District Ten. He has put together this, uh, safety committee at my request and we've met every month for, I, I can't remember how many months, Mark, we, we've been doing this. Uh, and, uh, and, uh, they, they've been very good. Uh, the, the aim or the goal is to improve the traffic flow on one fifty-two and make it safer. And this is a combination of the, uh, of the, the, uh, the previous plan and this current plan, which the previous plan wasn't too well received as, as Mark stated, but now this, this new plan is incorporating some of those aspects. But yet it's, it's adding some, some other, uh, uh, safety measures that will increase and, uh, the flow of traffic and also make it smoother through the city of Los Manos. The, um, uh, the, um, oh, I, I lost the word. The synchronization of the lights is going to be a huge benefit where these will be radio signal connected, uh, from one stoplight to the other. Will they be able to reprogram depending upon the traffic flow? And one fifty-two will finally be a modern thoroughfare through the city of Los Manos. And that coupled with, uh, the, the Pioneer Trail that we're working on is going to immensely improve the traffic through Los Manos. So, uh, with that, are there any questions from council or any additional comments from staff?
Well, one more, one more comment, just to let you know, um, this is not the end of proposed improvements. We do have the specific plan for State Route one fifty-two that should be done in the January timeframe, which is recommending more improvements. We do have Pioneer Corridor and as everyone knows, we're going to need at least two corridors to really relieve this, this congestion and make this a safer, uh, area to travel. and make this a safer area to travel. But, and then once the synchronization is up, we'll continue to study improvements and what else might be needed to, to reach our ultimate goal. And it'd be nice if we, if we could get approval and go forward with Pioneer. It'd be nice to see how that relates to safety also. That's all I got. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you. If there are no other comments, do I have a motion for City Council Resolution Number 6241?
Mayor, I'll make the resolution.
Go ahead.
I'll make the motion to approve Resolution Number 6241.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Johnson Santos and second by Faria for the approval of City Council Resolution Number 6241 is read by title. Faria?
Yes.
Johnson Santos?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Valalta, yes. Motion carries. Okay, let's go on to Item 10, COVID-19 Status Update. Chief Breezy?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Before we get to Item Number 10, I'd like to provide just a really brief update on some of the newest changes that have been going on in regards to the COVID virus in our community. And I wish I could say that COVID is going away, but it's not. In fact, it looks like cases are on the rise in our community and in Merced County. Currently, the county of Merced has identified just over 2,180 confirmed cases. And that's up about 1,000 cases since the beginning of July. And it's up over about 1,800 cases since the first of June. On June 1st, we had just over 300. I think the number was 301 cases of positive cases of the coronavirus. And now we're up to 2,180 in counties. That's a significant jump. In Los Banos, as of yesterday, we had a total of 255 confirmed cases. And of the jurisdictions in the county, we're third in the number of active or positive test cases behind Merced. Just about 800 cases and 300 in Atwater. Sadly, COVID has taken, caused the deaths of approximately 13 individuals in Merced County. One of the things that we like to do locally and amongst the EOC and the staff is to check the barometer really is how was our hospital doing in regards to COVID illness and COVID response to kind of gauge where we're at. And after speaking to Dr. Yu today, the CEO of the hospital here in Los Banos, I'm encouraged to hear that he, he's definitely seen a marked increase in the number of COVID cases in the hospital here in Los Banos, but they're managing those cases. They're getting the life-saving medicine, the medications that they need to treat COVID-affected individuals. They meet with staff often to ensure that they're keeping up with the demand. They do have the ability to increase their surge capacity if they need to. Fortunately, they haven't had to have to do that just yet. They do monitor that situation and their, their patient case load or their patient load fluctuates. Sometimes they're at capacity as of earlier today, there were a few beds available. But overall, the doctors seem to be encouraged to pass along that they've been able to meet the community needs for not only the COVID-affected individuals, but all of the regular hospital visits as well, meet all of their medical needs. So we're doing okay on the hospital level. We are monitoring it. It is a fluctuating situation, but we seem to be doing okay at the hospital here in Los Banos. And that's a good thing. I'd also like to mention a couple of things that have happened with the governor's daily bulletins, their briefings that he does at noon every day. On the 13th, there were some considerable changes that took place to the state's health order. And that affected those changes, closed down a number of indoor operated businesses and activities in Los Banos. Those include dining restaurants, movie theaters, family entertainment centers, gyms and fitness centers, places of worship, offices and not, excuse me, offices for non-essential or non-critical infrastructure, personal services like nail salons, barbers, barber shops, bars, pubs and malls. So that's a fairly significant change from where we were just a few days ago. But there is a silver lining there. Having, having given all that bad news, there is a little bit of light in that. In that, any of those businesses that I mentioned or those activities that can be modified to operate outside or by pickup of their goods, they can continue to operate in a modified capacity. And that's a lot to consume, a lot to take in. So one of the things that we did was to help clarify all the changes from the governor's order and some of the things that go on with the state and the local level, the county level. Today, we issued a press release on both the city's webpage, the COVID page at the losbanos.org, as well as our social media account at the police department, where we tried to discuss in a lot more detail what I just mentioned in, in regards to the changes in COVID, to COVID in our community. You'll find that on the police department's Facebook page and the PDF document on losbanos.org. There are a lot of links to help individuals in Los Banos explore COVID responses, COVID information, much further than we do in the social media post itself. But there's a lot of information that we relay to the community to try and keep them as educated and as informed as we can. Last, I think I'd like to remind everyone that the county of Merced does maintain a dashboard at co.merced.ca.us, if I recall correctly, where they have a fairly user-friendly webpage that's dedicated to COVID-related information, specifically for Merced County. Much of the statistics I gave you earlier are from that webpage. So I encourage everyone to check out that page as often as they can. It's updated very frequently. In fact, during the meeting, it was updated. I just didn't provide the new information because it was just updated a few minutes ago. I think that's about all I've got as far as a update. There's a lot of changes going on. It's still, and you hate to hear it, you hate to read it, but it's a very fluid situation. We all know there's a lot of changes that go on between the county and the state. At the staff level, we try and regurgitate that information down to something very user-friendly, something easy to consume for our residents so that we can get the information out there and continue to educate them. If there's no questions on that, I'll turn it over to the city attorney to take on Item Number 10A, which is the continuing of the declaration. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. This item's been before you a couple of times since March. If you recall, back in the middle of March, the city proclaimed a local emergency due to COVID-19. And the government code requires you to revisit that every 60 days. You've done that twice now and we're now within that 60-day timeframe to do it again. Simply the resolution just continues to extend the local emergency as long as COVID-19 is a threat to the citizens of Los Banos. The benefit of the continuing on with the declaration of local emergency, it ensures the city has availability to it, reimbursement through the state for expenditures made during the, during the duration of the local emergency and makes other resources available to the city. So it's fairly routine. You've done it twice before. The resolution really has not changed. The pandemic is hanging around. And so this resolution is necessary for us to take advantage of statewide resources as long as the local emergency is still in effect. So it's, it's really a routine resolution for you to consider tonight based on Chief Breezy's report that there are still issues resolving, revolving COVID-19 the city is dealing with now and may need to deal with in the future. So, is there any questions? It's staff's recommendation that you adopt the resolution as submitted.
Okay. So any comments from council at this time on City Council Resolution Number 6242, continuing the declaration and existence of a local emergency within the city of Los Banos COVID-19? Any comments from council? Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second that, Mayor.
Okay, it's been motion by Faria, second by Johnson Santos for the approval of City Council Resolution 6242 as read by title. Mr. Faria?
Yeah.
Mr. Santos?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Lewis?
Yes.
Valalta, yes. Motion carries. Item Number 11. Appointment of Commissioners to the Economic Development Advisory Commission to unexpired terms expiring December 31, 2020 and appoint two city council member terms expiring December 31, 2021. City Council Member Jones held interviews with his commission appointment, for his, this commission appointment and Community and Economic Development Director Elms. Recommendation, appoint Lorena Guzman and Anthony Dominguez to the two terms expiring December 31, 2020. Council members last appointed this commission were council members Faria and Lewis, and their terms expired December 31, 2019. No new council members were appointed in 2020 because there was not a full commission until now. Recommendation, appoint two city council members to terms expiring December 31, 2021. And the, for Lorena Guzman and Anthony Dominguez, do we need to confirm those two also? Director Maloney?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I could have two separate motions, that would be great.
Yes, yes, fine. Okay, so do I have a motion to appoint Lorena Guzman and Anthony Dominguez to the two terms expiring December 31, 2020?
So, Mayor? I'll make a motion.
Okay, it's been motion by, by Jones and second by Faria. All in favor? Oh, excuse me. Faria?
Yes.
Santos?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Valalta, yes. All right, now we need two city council members to terms expiring December 31, 2021. And the last two were Faria and Lewis. So do I have any recommendations or volunteers?
Um, I don't mind volunteering, Mayor.
Okay, Mrs. Santos? Do I have anyone else?
Mayor, go ahead and put myself down unless someone else would like to do it.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, I thought they had to be council members whose terms expired in '21. Both myself and Council Member Santos, we expire this year.
Okay. Director Maloney, can we appoint those two? And then they are both up for reelection and then can that be done by a new council if, if needed?
Yes, if, if there does create a new vacancy, we can reappoint.
Okay, okay.
That's not how I understood, and that's not how I understood the motion to be. Otherwise, I would have volunteered again. But I'm okay with the two people who have volunteered. It's good to have a new set of eyes on there, but that's not how I understood it. Thank you.
I understand, Mrs. Lewis, what you're saying and you're completely correct. Okay, so we have two people that have, have volunteered, that would be Santos and Jones. So do I have a motion for those two?
I'll, I'll make the motion with the comment that I sat on that committee for four, over 14 years. And it's a, it's a great place to be when on the cutting edge of what's going on in town. So I would happily make a motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor. And I sat on the committee with Council Member Faria. And it's been a pleasure serving the city on that particular committee.
Thank you so much. Okay, so it's been motion by Faria and second by Mrs. Lewis to approve Santos and Jones, two city council members to terms expiring December 31, 2021, unless election, Mr. Jones, you're not up for reelection though. So Mrs. Santos is. So, so we'll, we'll just go from there on that assumption. Okay, Faria?
Yes.
Santos? Mr. Jones? Yes. Okay, Jones?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
And Valalta, yes. Thank you both for volunteering. Appreciate it. And thank you to, to Faria and Lewis for serving on that committee honorably. Thank you. All right, let's go on to 12, Advisement and Public Notices. And we'll go to Community and Economic Development Director Elms' one report.
Yes, this particular item is pretty exciting in that it's a project for the city of Los Banos. It's a site plan review for Fire Station Number One for a training tower. This is to be located at 3337th Street. The public hearing will be held on Wednesday, July 22 at 4:00 PM. And it will be held on the GoToMeeting platform. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council on, on Director Elms' report? Okay, let's go on to the City Manager's report. Director, or see, City Manager, or see. Chief Breezy?
Um, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Mayor and council. And regards to Item Number 13A, I'd like to report that on July 7, 2020, based on the City Manager, City Manager Travis's review of the Community and Economic Development Director's performance. Her salary was increased to $9,346 monthly or an annual salary of $112,152, retroactive back to February 1, 2020. Only other item I have tonight, Mayor, is that I spoke during our COVID briefing about the virus still being here in our community. Just like to remind people that it is a serious health threat to our community and I would encourage everyone to continue to wear face coverings and to take other appropriate steps to keep themselves and their families safe. It's, it's just not going away. And the sooner that we get past this, the sooner we can all get back to normal. So that's all I've got, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any comments from council on City Manager's report? Okay, Item Number 14, Report Update on the Merced County Association of Governments, MCA G Measure V Committee. And we are still in the process of, of the Billy Wright Expansion, which is paramount to Los Banos. So our, our trash will not cost us the amount of money it would cost to, to drive in an additional 60 miles to, to the landfill in, on Highway 59 in Merced. That's why this is such a needed expansion and we are working on that and progressing. And also the Pioneer Trail to keep that on the forefront because that is going to come to fruition and we, we need to, to make sure that we revisit this. And as Mr. Fajian did today, tell us about the, the, the other accesses to, to travel through Los Banos. And this is an important one. So we're also working on that and we'll keep you updated every month as to any progress. Okay, so let's go on to Item 15, City Council Member Reports. And tonight we'll start with Mrs. Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of items. First of all, I want to congratulate our two new officers, police officers in the city of Los Banos and to our chief in his department of Vincenzo Greco and Stephen O'Day, who were sworn in recently and their feet are on the ground in training. And I, I'm really happy about these two officers coming on board. We needed them desperately. Also, if Stacy's still around, the farmer's market item that was pulled with the downtown association, I just wanted to make a comment that I remember the last time we had the farmer's market out there in the Henry Miller Plaza. I spoke with several of the vendors and they had issue with their vegetables drying up and withering very quickly because of all of the hardscape. And I, I don't know what you guys are planning to mitigate that, but it's just, you know, something that you may want to consider in the planning of this is that heat does bounce up and a lot of them, a lot of those vendors ended up not coming back because they lost their products and, and couldn't sell them. So that's, you know, just wanted to put that out there. Also, Eric Lamone was the manager of our waste management company and he was also one of our planning commissioners. And his wife, Crystal, sustained a serious accident at this past week. And his wife, Crystal, sustained a serious accident this past week. She's currently still in the hospital. I've communicated with Eric. I stay in contact with Crystal's father, and I'm told that she's still holding her own, but still in critical condition, but stable. So I'm just asking our community to remember Eric and Crystal and their thoughts and prayers and his family. He's going through some tough time right now, and any way that we can reach out and help him, I'm sure that the family would appreciate. But he just, I think right now, that's the best that I I can say is that he needs our thoughts and our prayers to go up for his wife for her speedy recovery and for him to just feel comfortable about what's going on with his family. And that's it, Mr. Mayor, this evening.
Thank you. Okay, let's go on to Mr. Faria.
Just echoing Johnson and Lewis's remarks regarding Crystal Lamon. Those kids have been part of my life for a very long time, and we wish them, we wish a recovery, and our prayers continue. Thanks.
Thank you. Mrs. Santos?
Got it, sorry. I want to also say I am with the Lamon family, and I I will keep you in my prayers as well, but that's about it, all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
No report.
Thank you. I've known Eric Lamon since junior high school and his family, and it's just so sad to hear that news. And I'm I'm just praying that his wife is 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 recovering. Yes, she is holding her own. She needs your prayers and thoughts. And I I my heart just goes out to the family because they're such nice, nice people. So I wish all of them well and a speedy recovery to Crystal. The Police Department has has just done a wonderful job recruiting officers, and we have homegrown officers that have come back to serve the city of Los Banos, and we're very happy with the recruitment efforts that the the chief has put forward and in the total department. So so thank you, Chief Breezy, for for all your efforts. The next announcement, I'm I'm just going to read because it's probably the only way I could do it. Dear friends, Los Banos has given me a wonderful place to grow up, raise a family, and an opportunity to work in an educational field and serve as your city council member and mayor. The friendships I have made in this community have meant everything to me. I am now announcing that I will not seek reelection in November. And at 70 years old, I will now be spending more time with my family and friends. Through the generosity of my contributors, I will have over $9,000 left in my campaign account that will be distributing to various Los Banos nonprofit groups that I have worked with over the years. It has been my privilege to serve as your mayor and to work with a very talented staff and devoted city council. I wish you all well and please stay safe. With that, we will now go into closed session and closed session conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6. Agency designated representatives, City Manager Tarazas, City Attorney Vaughn, City Clerk, Human Resources Director Maloney, Finance Director Williams, Legal Counsel Tufo, Employee Organizations, Los Banos Police Officers Association, LBPOA, Los Banos Police Sergeants Association, LBPSA, Los Banos Firefighters Association, LBFFA, and Los Banos Police Dispatchers Community Services Officers Association, LBPDCSOA, and Los Banos Public Employees Union, Public Works Local 1/AFSCME, and Unrepresented Miscellaneous Employees. And if there's anything to to report, we will do so after the closed session, and we will be back on. Stay safe, keep your distance, and please wear a mask. Thank you and good evening.